Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 5th informational meeting. Our vice chair will be rolling in here pretty quick to take over, so hopefully it's all right if I get things started. Counselor Sale will not be attendance in attendance to this meeting, but will be here this evening. So we do have a full agenda today, so we'll get right to it. And first of all, do we have any committee reports? Looks like we have CCOG, but I do not see Counselor Starr or Sale are not here. We've got the Audit Committee. How about Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, go ahead.
So last week, we had our Metro Management Council meeting. Really, we just went over the upcoming budget that will be presented to us here in financials and just talked about the 911 text messaging that has been really successful in getting folks to communicate a little bit differently as technology changes and improves. And so that was really the gist of it is mostly financials and a director's meeting, so not too much to report on that one.
And how about the Audit Committee? Counselor Kylie?
I did not. We had the Audit Committee was presented, our external audit by Aid Bailey. And things were, had gone well, very, very few questions. Counselor Nicer could add anything else as he was in attendance at that as well, too. The external audit is what we're talking about, Counselor.
Anything to add to the audit report?
Just another clean audit and many, many years of award-winning transparency in our annual reports.
Oh, terrific. All right. Thank you for that. Do we have any counselor remarks today? Seeing none, we will get right to it with the presentations. And our first one today will be Forward Sioux Falls, the 2022 through 2026 agreement. And I believe Mr. Lynch will be presenting that today. Welcome.
Good afternoon, council, and thank you so much for having us. First of all, we'd like to say on behalf of Forward Sioux Falls, thank you. We appreciate your past investment and look forward to the opportunity of sharing both accomplishments from the Forward Sioux Falls program as well as projected impacts in the future. Again, Mike Lynch, Executive Director of Investor Relations for Forward Sioux Falls. And just by definition, Forward Sioux Falls is the partnership between the Development Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce, created in 1987, and we are currently within our eighth program with the goal of pursuing long-term economic objectives, aligning them with near-term needs and opportunities. And that all comes together after we complete our campaign, which is every five years, which was recently completed this last fall. Right now, we have approximately 315 investors throughout the Sioux Falls area, and that comprises a multitude of sectors. Forward Sioux Falls is governed by the Joint Venture Management Committee, and that is comprised of both the executive committees of the Chamber and Development Foundation, along with five, up to five appointed members. And currently, Chris Ekstrom is the Chair of the JVMC. We meet quarterly. So what we've done, in a nutshell, we've grown jobs, diversified our economy, enhanced the profile of Sioux Falls from one that used to be more of a regional hub to one that has more national prominence and recognition. And we do believe that it's stood the test of time, again, currently in our eighth program. We do a scorecard at the end of each program to see what the deliverables were and what the ROI was. And this is a snapshot following our Forward Sioux Falls VII campaign, which ended March of 2021. As you can see, lots of good information there with new annual personal income, new net jobs, and new annual business output, all being extremely influential. At the end of the day, the private sector ROI had a return of $5.99 for each dollar, and the public sector, $3.68 for every dollar. Talk a little bit about the campaign. Again, Mayor Paul Tenhaiken was the honorary co-chair and did a fantastic job for us. Also, chairing the campaign was Paul Hanson, Dave Rosenbaum, and Dave Flechek. We had a $15 million cash goal, and we wanted to be respectful of the community, especially given the fact that we were obviously involved in, deeply involved in the pandemic at the time. And we approached 20 of our largest investors, had conversations with them, and asked them frankly, should we continue what the campaign is scheduled, should we delay? And unanimously, it was stated back to us that we need to continue and that it was needed now more than ever. So we did that, and I do also want to state that the way that we conduct our campaign is several months before the campaign even begins, we formulate a program that's initially designed with help from the JVMC and staff, and then we test it through a case study throughout the business community. And then ultimately, we land on what ultimately is our program. And in this last program, the current program, I should say, from the last campaign, those are the different focus areas. Here's a timeline of the campaign amounts raised. And within kind, our total was $16.9 million, so we really do consider this campaign to be extremely successful. This chart, I believe, is intriguing and an important thing to note. We contract, have contracted each of the last eight campaigns with NCDS, which is a campaign management consultant organization out of Atlanta. And among their clients, 61% of their clients, I should say, of their 106 clients, 61% of the funding generated from campaigns is public-generated, and 39 comes from the private sector. With Forward Sioux Falls, for the last campaign, it's 77% privately funded and 23% publicly funded. And just as a side note, those who are public entities that are investors in Forward Sioux Falls, the city of Sioux Falls, obviously, being a significant investor, Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, and the Airport Authority Board, to name the significant ones. Want to talk just a little bit about the initiatives within the current program and some of the accomplishments, or at least some of the target areas based on 2021 actual and what the 2022 goal is. And as you can tell, within the area of talent attraction development and retention, those are some really impressive numbers, we believe, with direct workforce connections, digital impressions, the number of talent and workforce programs, and relationships created not only within the K-12 school system, but also with post-secondary educational partners. And those relationships have been just imperative to the overall success of Forward Sioux Falls. As it relates to prospect profiles, again, much of this work, this particular work, being facilitated through the Development Foundation, what I believe is important to note on this slide would be just the various sectors and the opportunities that we have to place these organizations, to place these businesses within the parks that are available. And also, the reality that the above median wage jobs are very significant, very high, 22-plus an hour. Foundation Park, no secret that that has gained significant momentum over the last couple of years. And the city of Sioux Falls, of course, was instrumental in completing the infrastructure development, so we thank you very much for that. BNSF certified, and there are the projects to date that are noted. Couple different points that I'd like to note on this slide. Over 3,300 jobs have been created since 2017 at Foundation Park, and the Development Foundation has paid over $5 million in plating and sanitary sewer cost recovery fees. And then the property taxes generated comparable from 2017 to 2021, $50,000 per year in 2017, and over $6 million generated in 2021. There's still some available acres remaining that are noted there. It's also important to note that the great work being done is not just about recruiting new businesses to Sioux Falls, but making sure that existing businesses are well taken care of. And we have a very robust BR and E program to make sure that those industry calls are being made, visits are being made, and local new businesses, the lead share is taken care of, too. So, again, making sure that there are solutions to these organizations, individual situations, identifying trends, and ultimately, just making connection points to businesses. USD Discovery District, another initiative that is a longstanding one within Forward Sioux Falls, biotech and medical primarily. And this slide here just shows the public-private partnerships, and this is just one example of the collaborative efforts that are so imperative within and baked into the Forward Sioux Falls program. SiouxFalls.com is a combined effort between the Chamber and Development Foundation, Forward Sioux Falls-funded. Landing page, really, for those external audiences, those individuals and those organizations primarily that are just curious about Sioux Falls and, you know, want to know what the job climate is like, what the quality of life components are, what the business climate is like, what the educational sector is all about. So this is kind of what we consider to be that one-stop shop. And then business advocacy, which is a longstanding Forward Sioux Falls initiative as well. Areas noted up there within the Chamber, primarily facilitated attendance at city council meetings, Minnehaha County Commission meetings, extensive lobbying in peer. And this last session, there were some significant lobbying accomplishments with housing, with workforce, infrastructure, USD Discovery District, the Cyber IT Park, Southeast Texas Health Sciences Simulation Center, the National Guard Readiness Center, the State Veterans Cemetery road upgrade, and railroad quiet zones. So lots of great activity and great accomplishments, really, throughout this past session. On this slide, we note some additional Forward Sioux Falls initiatives. Sioux Empire Housing Partnership, making sure that those educational services are provided. Startup Sioux Falls Entrepreneurship has been Forward Sioux Falls initiative since day one. Sioux Falls Thrive, the Cradle to Career Initiative, and YPN also facilitated through the Chamber with the networking opportunities, personal growth opportunity type of functions that are conducted through YPN on a monthly basis. And then the Crossroads Summit, which I think some of you have had the opportunity to attend every other year that is taking place, with over 450 in attendance this last year, and that continues to grow. And YPN membership actually has grown about 130, 140 members since 2019. So that's a very positive direction that we're going with that, too. We also do not only the ROI from the past program, but we also do projections for the upcoming program. So these are some of those, and they're ambitious, for sure. And I will say that Forward Sioux Falls will never take full credit. However, we do believe that the impact that it's had and the impact that it will have are extremely contributing factors to the organizations that come to Sioux Falls, the people who move to Sioux Falls, the capital investment. And certainly, we want to stay focused on housing. So it's, again, very ambitious, but we're very excited about where we will be at the end of this program. I would just add that in the back there, and I had given these items to Dustin, but we do have our program, which was used during the campaign, which highlights the different initiatives that were noted and even a few that we didn't have time for to get into much detail today. And then Forward Sioux Falls, about two and a half years ago, did a book, and there's a copy for each of you back there. Quick read, but we feel it encapsulates really the essence of Forward Sioux Falls, the impact that it's had. And then also, just to touch upon the young professionals, again, we realize that it's extremely important that the younger generation of leaders understand the impact of Forward Sioux Falls because they're going to be the ones carrying the torch forward. So, again, thank you very much for the opportunity. And at this time, we certainly entertain any questions. Also, in attendance is Bob Munt from the Development Foundation and Jeff Griffin from the Chamber. Are there any specific questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any questions? Counselor Nicer?
No questions. Just first of all, thank you for coming with such a big investment. It's important that we hear what we're getting for our money. And I think maybe the most striking and impressive thing to me is the amount of private investment. Obviously, businesses must believe it's a good investment if they're making that big of an investment. So that's impressive to see that compared to other jurisdictions. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Nicer. And I would just add to that, that, you know, the city of Sioux Falls, again, we just can't thank you enough for the investment historically that you've given each and every program, you know, just shy of $8 million over the history. So, thank you so much.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. No specific question, but thank you for coming and for your team being here as well. These are the things that move the needle of what you guys are doing. And so it's really exciting to see the goals versus the actuals and the impressions that are being made with the talent attraction development and retention and those measurables. Those are key for us to know that those dollars invested are going beyond what we expected. And so so much of what you do also isn't even in this presentation because you are out and about and do so much for our community. And I will agree with Counselor Nicer that seeing the amount of private dollars invested, we live in a pretty darn, pretty darn great community to be able to have people step up and put their money where their mouth is in investing to make sure that this community is where we want it to be. And so, thank you for coming today. I know it wasn't without some challenges, but we appreciate you presenting this and sharing your story. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. I, too. Mike, thank you very much for the information. I appreciate it. I have enjoyed working with you over the past eight years in your previous position and in this position as well. I mean, the Chamber of Commerce and Forward Sioux Falls and Sioux Falls Development Foundation and the city of Sioux Falls, working together collaboratively, just goes to show, I mean, what a great community we have here. And I've had the opportunity to speak to this a couple of times in the last week, just recently at the groundbreaking for Hayward Park, because it was another situation, private-public partnership benefiting the community. And so what you have done over the years, in the past eight years since I've been on the council and Counselor Erickson has been, and even before that, these are all examples of the good work that you have performed and will continue to perform. And the community does benefit from this. The return on investment is good. It's not just city money that you're working with. It's, yes, that's part of the seed money, but we're getting other private money as well, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll end this segment, but thank you very much. Counselor Starr must have gotten all of his questions answered. Don't see him here today. The question I have here is, if not you guys, then who? So I just want to thank you for what you guys are doing. I said that last week, and we'll say it again. If not, who will do it? So, thank you for your work. Thank your investors for us, because it's you and your investors that are moving the needle. We are a part of that, and we're thankful to be a part of it, because if it wasn't you, it'd land on us, and we're not good at that. So, thank you very much, and we'll move on to our next presentation. We have the Director of Parks and Recreation that's going to step up, and he's going to give us his presentation in 15 minutes. All right, and we will go from there. Thanks, Don.
You bet. Thank you, city councilors. Appreciate the opportunity to give you an update on Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park. Since we were last before you as a council, we really spent a lot of time working on the preliminary design for the entire 10-acre site known as Jacobson Plaza. Obviously, we kicked off design, working with Confluence on how we should ultimately build out that space. We've done significant research and tours of like facilities, spent a considerable amount of time on trying to make sure that we sized the ribbon appropriately. We've looked at the four different cities that have ice ribbons to just try to learn from them on how big did they build it and what were the lessons learned. Had an opportunity to go up in the Twin Cities area, specifically Maple Grove as it relates to their ice ribbon, but also toured the area as well for inclusive playgrounds that we're proposing as part of this project, too. And so no sense reinventing the wheel and just trying to learn from those other service providers. And then, one of the other things that we've been doing is, as you know, this is a brownfield site with a significant contamination in that particular area. And so we want to make sure we did it right, and so we've been working with the South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources to make sure that they're comfortable with our proposed construction methods. A little bit more regarding the preliminary design. Our goal, again, was to figure out the spatial layout of the entire 10 acres. We, again, wanted to make sure that we were looking at pedestrian and vehicle connections. How does the pickup, parking and pickup and drop-off options work? The other thing that we've done is we've talked to the person that ran Bryant Park in New York City, where they have an ice rink and really have a lot of good feedback for us as it relates to things that you can do to really activate the space. We looked at refrigeration options. There's some interesting changes being made out there as it relates to laws and regulations regarding the different types of refrigerants you can use in your system. And some of those are actually being banned in some of the other states. So it's good that we had that conversation with our ice consultant and then meeting with the various different stakeholders that obviously will have a stake in this particular project and look upon it with great interest. So with that, that gives you a little background of what we've been doing since we were last before you. Now I'd like to have John Jacobson with Confluence come up and kind of step you through the master plan.
Thank you, Don. Good afternoon, council. Thanks for having us today. One thing, just for the record, I'm not related to Gary or his family. I have asked him to adopt me a few times, but so far, I've been turned down. So to run the council kind of through what we're up to here, as Don mentioned, we've done an entire master plan for the 10-acre site. So essentially, everything that's colored there on that plan is the Jacobson Plaza. So, and we've got a number of improvements that we're planning for in the future that aren't going to be built in this first phase, but we want to make sure from a programming and layout point of view that it all makes sense. So this gives you kind of an overview, a bird's eye, of the entire plaza build-out. You can see kind of the main green down to the south in front of the Steel District, going all the way out north to the new ice ribbon. This is an overview of the inclusive play or universal play area in the heart or the center of the plaza. So the overall site is about 10 acres. The first phase of development is about four and a half acres. It'll focus on a 14,000-square-foot ice ribbon, a new building that will feature mechanical and operations facility for the maintenance and operations of the ribbon, warming house area, and a kind of cafe court, all of which is about 9,000 square feet. There's a small off-street parking lot of about 32 spaces. And what really the main heart of that function is dealing with a couple of things. One, it's going to deal as a drop-off for the different uses that are located within the plaza. We met with a number of user groups for both facilities, but especially the universal play, having direct access for the type of users who have limited mobility and those types of issues is really important. Plus, we wanted to make sure that, much like our experiences at Great Bear as a community, there'll be a lot of teenage kids dropped off at this facility through the winter, so we want to make sure we have good circulation for them. This is an overview of the universal play area, which is kind of centered in the park. Related to our site tours, you see just to the north, future water feature splash pad. That's part of the play. We didn't tour one facility that was really busy or successful that didn't have that water feature. So that's one of the reasons why it's programmed into the ultimate vision. This is just a view of the ribbon area. In the wintertime, we want to make sure that it's dynamically laid out, both from a winter use point of view with multiple areas to go and hang out and use the ribbon, but also you see an adjacent shelter there in the plaza space that's out in front of the warming house and the cafe court. It's important to note that this can be used in the winter or in the summertime as well. So we don't want this to be a one-dimensional space that's kind of quiet throughout the summer. And that's where our meetings with our stakeholders and our continuing meetings with them are really important. As an example, this facility could be leased out in the summertime for private events, but also could be used as a pre-event space for the Levitt as the area continues to develop around there. Nancy has mentioned to us a number of times that she'd really like to look for a pre-event space for the users for the show throughout the summer. This can accommodate that quite well. The ribbon itself, obviously, is going to be busy in the wintertime, but we're also programming uses for it in the summer. That may include kind of a changing series of events through the summer, maybe things like temporary mini-golf, rollerblading, skateboarding, those kind of things. So those are all things that we're currently examining with the Parks Department. Just another view of the overall ribbon. Obviously, it being wintertime, lighting is very important. So this gives you a current schematic of the floor plan. As I mentioned, it's about 2,000 square feet dedicated to maintenance and operations in the Zamboni House, the warming house, and associated restrooms and maintenance, and then the cafe court. So we're interviewing a number of stakeholders for that space as well, potential different types of operators, but really, again, trying to have it be more than just kind of one dimension in the wintertime. And so this gives you an example of what that space could operate through the summer as well. And then warming area in the wintertime. Lastly, view architecturally of the buildings, but we want them to be quite transparent and open so that both in the summer and the winter, you can see what's going on, both on the inside and outside. And finally, one overview shot of the ribbon. And as I mentioned, the lighting and the accessory spaces will be really important for its use. So just some key kind of design programming notes. One, as Don mentioned, we've toured a number of facilities over the last six months and taken their experiences into our layout. Our layout, while we're taking the overall view, was constrained by a number of existing features within the park. Sanitary sewer main runs through that site. Obviously, Don mentioned- Obviously, Don mentioned the past environmental history of that site and drainage that goes through there. Those are all big variables that really affect our layout. So, ultimately, a 14,000-square-foot ribbon will accommodate 200 people on average comfortably. From a maximum code point of view, it'd be about 250 people at once with a weekly capacity based on our research of other rinks of about 11,000 people. And then, the playpods themselves at Surtoma Park equal about a little bit over 19,000 square feet. The inclusive universal play area that we're designing, that entire area will be a little bit over 26,000 square feet. So, just to give you a sense of scale and why that space is important.
Thanks, John. So, if Council member, we, we entered into a gifting agreement with Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. And one of the things I wanted to talk to you a little bit about is what's changed from what was originally envisioned to now that we've lived it and talked to the various different stakeholders and as well as toured various different facilities. Probably comes as no surprise, we're seeing 20% to 25% cost escalation in construction projects. The program also proposes a lot of the things that John just talked about. The expanded ice ribbon, the environmental remedies that are going to have to be put in place to be able to, to construct on the site. Felt like it was important to have that parking and drop-off facility as well. The footprints of the buildings have changed based on what we've heard from other operators. And then, the other amenities, the light, the sound, the architectural features. Really try to make it a festive atmosphere within Falls Park West or Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park. And then, along with that goes the expanded common areas to support the additional amenities. We have worked with Gary in order to be able to identify additional funding to support that. So, both parties agreed to expand their contribution, subject to your approval, obviously, to 5.5 million. So, Gary's agreed to step up and, and do that. And so, one of the things I wanted to talk about is, you know, what are the benefits of doing more now versus later? Obviously, the, the reason why we are proposing the additional improvements is really to provide a better experience. You know, extend the stay of people that are using it. There's more things to do. Certainly will drive revenue and attendance and just generally increase the economic activity in our downtown. Ultimately, doing more now reduces the number of phases that we would have to implement. And it would also typically, by doing more versus multiple phases, you save money by not having all the mobilization costs that a contractor would normally have. And then, it also minimizes the amount of disruption that you have and the number of times that it's disrupted by having fewer phases. The other thing I wanted to share is that a lot of these adjacent projects are also under construction or will be under construction. Will that be in the Steel District that's currently under construction and will continue on through 2023, as well as the Phase 3 of the River Greenway, which is projected to start at the end of this year? So, having all those happening at once is, is better than, you know, multiple construction projects over an extended period of time. And then, you know, I think it's another example of how, once the Falls Park Master Plan is completed, how we can work to build out these spaces with public-private partnerships. So, as it relates to that, we're going to propose an amendment to the gifting agreement that we entered into with the Community Foundation to reflect these changes as proposed. Our revised timeline would be start bidding this summer, start construction in the fall of this year, and then have our grand opening next fall. It incorporates the increased scope and cost escalation that I shared with you, as well as Phase 2 consideration. So, Phase 2 would basically address the spray ground, the dog park and the area just north of Fourth Street, just north of the Levitt Shell for the expanded open space and shelter. And so, one of the things that we've, we've been working on is, as it relates to Phase 2, that we would agree to negotiate how that is funded and what that ultimately is, looks like as it relates to the plans for that. And with the ideal situation, be a three-to-five-year build-out. I know we're supportive of, obviously, additional build-out and I know Gary would like to see it happen sooner than later as well. But just know that, you know, obviously, it takes your support as a council to appropriate the additional dollars to be able to move forward with that. So, so we will bring that resolution to you. That would amend and restate that agreement at the April 9th City Council Meeting, 19th City Council Meeting. And then, we would also plan to go to the Parks and Rec Board on April 13th for a recommendation. With me today, obviously, is Jim Weidrich with, who represents the family, as well as Robin Howman with the family as well. You're available for questions or, or comments that you may want from them. And certainly, just would close by thanking the Jacobson family. Gary, just been great to work with, extremely generous to see this project through. And we're just trying to come alongside their private investment to make Jacobson Plaza at Falls Park a reality. So, with that, I'd open it up to questions.
Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director, for the presentation. Appreciated learning more about this as we went. I'm getting a lot of good feedback about this as we go. I was actually in a group thing this morning and the mayor presented and he talked about this. We even heard a little couple of oohs and ahs there, you know, our ice rink in here. What I like about it is that, as you're saying, you're being proactive and doing more now. How many different cities have you been to to kind of study what they've done and then made tweaks from there? I mean, has even the ribbon itself, have you made that bigger? I think you talked about that as well.
Yeah, so those cities like Spokane, Spokane, Green Bay, South Bend, Indiana, are all cities that we've researched to determine the size of their ribbons. John mentioned that we originally started out with a kind of a base program of 12,000 square feet for the ice ribbon. But, one of the things that we're, wanted to make sure that we did upfront is build it as big as you think you're going to need it because you can't go back and change it later. So, we have added another 2,000 square feet. And that's, you know, just as big as some of these other larger cities that have these ice ribbons. Maple Grove is a bit of an anomaly where they have a much larger one. And then, Chicago, obviously, is a much different scenario than our metro area. So, we have increased it and, and I know Gary was supportive of that, too.
And I know it's a challenge because like you say, cost-wise, would you say a number of items, you won't know what the final cost is till they get it on the truck?
Well, exactly, yeah. The, the procurement, you know, literally, we're hearing that until it's on the truck, you can't get a price for some of the products that we need.
Yeah, that can make things a bit of a challenge, right. And then, finally, so in the summertime, how can we utilize this? A couple of different things you talked about.
Yeah, you know, we, we've been brainstorming a little bit, but most of the ones that we've seen are toured. You know, they probably just allow rollerblading and other wheel-type sports to be able to use it because it's concrete, you know, in the summertime. But the other thing we talked about, could you turn it into a miniature golf course and have holes that people could play on? We could check out, you know, putters and golf balls like you would at an amusement park out of the warming house potentially. And so, we're still brainstorming a little bit more about what else we could do there, but obviously, we could activate the space with, you know, you know, art shows or you could do a variety of different things that bring people in to use those various different spaces we have with the buildings there.
All right, well, thanks again for the presentation and for everybody also involved. Pretty exciting stuff, so.
Any other questions? Counselor Kylie.
No questions, but I do appreciate the briefing that we had earlier last week as well on this particular project. I guess, unfortunately, it does not come as a surprise to any of us that there's a, there's costs of construction has escalated, just like it has for everything else. And for me personally, you know, the need for an, an additional environmental study. Because even, even though I look like I'm much younger than our, our chair, I have been around here for a while and I do know that Falls West was used as a landfill originally. So, there's, there is absolutely need for the additional studies to make sure that we do this correctly and that there's no environmental issues down the road for anybody. I do agree with the increase size of the ice ribbon because I think this is going to be an attraction that will draw people. And we want to be able to accommodate individuals versus turning them, turning them away. Otherwise, it's a little bit like dangling candy out from a child and then snatching it away from them. So, let's, let's do what we can to accommodate the people. I mean, it was already, it included the ice ribbon, the adaptive park, but the addition of the, the parking and a drop-off site. I mean, it's just, that makes so much sense, especially with having an adaptive park there. Individuals that do need transportation to and from the park. So, this is, and, and the expansion of the cafe and the court so that it does become a true attraction and, and a year-round attraction as we had discussed last week, too. So, again, I, I know I sound like a broken record, but another great example of a private-public relationship here that is just having a great return on our investment. And we have a family that's stepping up big time to help offset those increases in costs. So, I thank you, Jacobson's family, from the bottom of my heart. Because this is why I ran for this City Council eight years ago, to provide these kinds of opportunities for our citizens and better opportunities than I've enjoyed during my lifetime of living here in Sioux Falls. So, thank you to everybody involved.
Counselor Neitzler.
Thank you. Before I have, I do have a few questions. I, I do want to say, and I'm sure this, this is on behalf of everybody, thanks to the Jacobson family. What an incredible gift. This doesn't happen without them. What an incredible legacy it's going to be. So, the splash pad, remind me, that would be potentially part of a Phase 2?
Correct, yes. That would be envisioned as part of Phase 2 along with the dog park and the area just north of Fourth Street.
Is there plans or is it necessary to potentially put in maybe, obviously, there's going to be some, some plumbing that that could be, that could be stubbed in essentially and you could just put the above-ground stuff up later when minimize disruption or?
Yeah, what we've talked to John about is trying to make sure that we do as much of the grading as we possibly could for the future improvements as well and any utility stub-outs while we have utility companies in there, you know, to the extent that we can, try to stub out those utilities to support those other spaces.
Okay. And then, we've talked about this, for example, when we talked about the Falls Park master planning. Obviously, parks, you want to have plenty of free components accessible to all, but we also understand that these things need to be sustainable and when you have this many things, there's going to be an operating cost. So, talk about the balance and what you're thinking about as it relates to making sure that there's, you know, revenue generation to help to recover operating costs. It maybe even make a profit, but also have things that are not going to have a fee and will be available to anybody.
Well, as of right now, the, really, the only fee that we're talking about is, is if you wanted to buy some concessions or if you wanted to rent skates, like we do now at our existing ice rinks. I think, you know, this council historically has been a council that's wanted to make sure that things were affordable regardless of your ability to pay. And so, we understand that philosophy the council's historically had and, you know, we, we haven't set those prices yet, but obviously, we'll actively engage the council in what those are ultimately when we open.
Okay, and then, if it would be okay, I have one more. And it, if it'd be okay, I think John Jacobson would be best positioned to answer this, this one. So, talking about the parking lot as, you know, as a landscape designer. Number one, what have you done to, obviously, especially when you have, you know, differently-abled people and things like that, there's going to have to be circulation and easy access to get there. But obviously, I would, you know, you would know you want to minimize the, the parking and minimize conflict. So, do you think that you've done what you needed to do in terms of having the minimal amount of parking necessary and circulation to make it accessible? But not be a detriment?
Yeah. I, I think that you've touched on something that's very important to us. One, aesthetically, lots of green downtown is important in a, you know, a highly urban area. So, we wanted to be sensitive to that. Through our meetings with the stakeholders, you know, there's a number of different types of vehicles that will use this parking lot to drop off anything from a typical car or an accessible van to an extended van to even a short bus. So, we want to make sure all that's accommodated here. Also, you know, just kind of based on the operations of the facility itself with the cafe and the warming house, there's going to be day-to-day operational deliveries that are going to have to occur. So, we wanted to make sure that we had a clearly-defined area of access for that. So, I think you could argue that it could be bigger if you wanted it to be, but we really feel like this current size is appropriate knowing how much on-street parking there is for able-bodied folks along with the new parking ramp that'll be part of the Steel District. We feel like this is a fair compromise. And Counselor, one thing I would add to, in addition to what Don said about potential fees, all the research that we did on the various ribbons throughout the country, there was only one ribbon that we studied that actually had free access. All the rest were charged.
Yeah, no, and, and I mean, to be very transparent, I'm all about minimizing parking. So, I'm, I'm glad to see this. So, I was just, if anything challenging, you know, could it even be, even be smaller? But there's realism. And you did touch on a few, I had thought about, you know, obviously, for people that don't have disabilities, you've got a lot of on-street parking, you've got the Steel District, so, but you do have to provide some of that. And it looks like you maybe have, but the other things I was thinking about is as you're driving down, you know, the parking lot isn't like necessarily what you want to see. So, any thoughts about what you maybe have done with landscaping to kind of hide that and, and showcase other pieces? And then, also, it looks like you've got a lot of circulation so you can minimize car pedestrian conflicts if somebody could make it from the Steel District without ever having to go by a parking lot?
That's right. So, this, this will have a, a good connection both to on-street pedestrian facilities that run along Phillips Avenue, but also connecting the Falls Park and to the eventual Greenway that'll be built along the Steel District edge. So, in theory, you can come out the main entrance of the Steel District. The Hilton is an example. Get on a path and walk into the park. Or you can come out and back through their primary event space, walk onto the quasi-public-private space that exists there and go down onto the Greenway, walk all the way into Falls Park without even crossing a road.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation and thank you for your donation to the city. Wow, outstanding. Next, we're going to have our Safety and Home Repair Grant Program. We have Mr. Smith, the Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services, coming in front of us. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon. Kevin Smith with Planning and Development Services. One of the initiatives in the 2026 Housing Action Plan is listed as this. Leverage federal funds and public incentives to revitalize core neighborhoods. So, I'm here this afternoon to talk about a program that actually should be live on our website as we speak to achieve that initiative. And that is the, the Safety and Home Repair Grant Program. And the new program is aimed at our continuing effort of helping homeowners maintain safe, healthy homes for them and their families. And it's for qualified homeowners in Sioux Falls that are, they're now going to be eligible for up to $5,000 in, in grant funds to make home repairs. And it's, it's something that we have access to because we, there's $1.4 million in ARPA funds that we currently have available to us. And important point is, budget supplement is not required because the ARPA funds were part of the 2022 Housing Division budget. Something we need to remember and, you know, somewhat of a, I'd say, sense of urgency is that the funds need to be expended by the end of December of 2024. So, we have some opportunities ahead of us and I will give credit to our housing staff, public works, finance and, and IT in pulling together the program and the materials and the online applications for ease of use for the public so we can get this out and, you know, get the, get the funding in the hands of the people who need it most. Those that qualify. So, who does qualify? Low-to-moderate income households. Some limits here. Property must be owned by the homeowner and be within city limits of Sioux Falls. Property must be structurally sound but in need of repairs. Mobile homes and rental properties are not eligible and properties to be repaired for resale are not eligible. So, essentially, if, if someone's intending to sell their house and, you know, let's say it would potentially become a rental immediately, we're, we're trying to avoid that and make those investments or provide funding for investments for people who want to improve the house they're living in now and will be in for several years. We also tangentially have We also tangentially have other funding programs for mobile home repairs as well as, um, uh, loan programs for rental properties and those improvements. So this grant program specifically is intended for low and moderate income, or I should say, you know, challenged properties in the core typically, uh, although they're, the program is available citywide. And just to give you a sense of who is eligible, a family of four, uh, the median household income number for them would be, uh, 50,000, $53,625 per year. So, um, we know there is a need in central Sioux Falls, although this is citywide, um, to make those investments. And what type of repairs qualify? Laundry list of items, you know, everything you can think of essentially to improve their properties, including, um, sidewalk repairs, which we know there will be, I think it's on the order of 2,600 letters, notifications going out to property owners about repairs that need to be made. And one of the benefits of this program for any of those individuals who receive that letter, they'll also receive a flyer, uh, that outlines this program. And, uh, if they use us as, uh, not just the funding source through the grants, but also the, the contract that the city has issued or will be issuing for sidewalk repairs that we'll be making, you also get the benefit of, uh, a much better deal on the sidewalk repairs. I, I think it's somewhere around, um, $225 a panel. We anticipated it was going to be 300, it's much less. Uh, I'm not going to ask Andy Berg to come up and, and verify it, but if a property owner has sidewalk repairs that need to be made and they're eligible for the program, we'll have the work done, they'll get a better deal, um, you know, and, and again, we're improving those properties in and, uh, part of the infrastructure. And you can apply by going online to, uh, the address that's listed above, or you can contact us directly and, you know, someone will sit down with you and, and walk you through the program requirements, the eligibility, the application process. And our, our goal is to get as much money to those needed property owners as quickly as we can because we, we want to make sure we don't leave, uh, any of those ARPA funds on the table. So with that, um, I'll entertain any questions you have.
Very nice. Are there any questions today? Counselor Brecky?
Just a few questions about, um, how the money's going to be dispersed. I, um, how, how are you going to determine who and how is it going to be determined? What repairs are made and, you know, it, it listed like things that qualify and how many repairs are made on a specific pro- you know, specific home? Um, how, how's that process going to work or is that still to be determined?
It's, it, it will be similar to the single-family housing, uh, repair program we have right now in terms of, uh, the review and the methodology that a, a staff person will, uh, meet with the property owner. The, generally for those repairs, other than sidewalks, the property owner needs to take some initiative and get, uh, at least two quotes for the repairs. We'll meet with the property owner to determine the eligibility and, you know, the check will go to the contractor. So we're, we're ensuring that, you know, the funds go exactly where they're supposed to. But, uh, I, I'd say generally, Counselor, it, it's going to follow the, the same structure that we have in place. It's just with a different funding source and a few different, uh, requirements in terms of eligibility.
Well, just, thank you. Just, um, a word of excitement, I'm terribly excited about this. You know, we had conversations about, you know, and my desire to not just do emergency fix-up, but I said, we need to get in the homes, we need, I call it deferred maintenance fund. We need to get in the homes, we need to upgrade those communities. I've been, you know, saying that, saying that, and I always add because it has such a huge impact on crime and crime prevention is, you know, healthy neighborhoods and that if there is a way to get inside the houses, outside the houses, do those maintenance issues along with, you know, the safety program, along with the infill that the mayor has suggested. I mean, I think that's really getting into the, the place where I'm, you know, I've been really, I guess, wanting that since I came back because I think that's so important to the overall health of the city, again, from the crime prevention at, at, uh, part of the thing. So the other question that I have those, why are trailer homes being left out of it?
Uh, again, there is another, uh, program specifically for those. So these are, these are specifically for, uh, single-family properties.
But my understanding of the trailer one, and just correct me if I'm wrong, is that, again, is just emergency repairs, like a furnace or, um, it's just emergency stuff. It doesn't do the maintenance issues.
Typically, yes, but this, again, these are for the property owners and those mobile home repairs are not on property they own typically. They're on, on rented lots, rented spaces. So I, I don't know if that answers your, or addressed your question.
It does, but I, I would, I would just make a suggestion, you consider taking a look at that issue because most of them own their trailers.
Sure.
And they're in trailers because that's an affordable housing for them. And the deferred maintenance issue for them, because they're at that lowest level anyway, a lot of them, um, is really a very important one for them and to assist them as well, um, to wrap them into this. If there was a way to wrap them into this, I would sure like you to take a look at that because I just have some personal experiences with a couple of the trailer home parks and the occupants trying to get those emergency funds and how difficult it is. And then that doesn't address all the other needs and they're just barely keeping that roof over their head. As long as they own the trailer, you know, I'm not troubled by the fact that they're just paying rent to be in the trailer park. And it, it, it really, they're just this far from homelessness. And so to the extent that we can fix up those trailers a little bit inside and out, too, um, I'd sure like to take a look at that as well. But again, terribly excited about this. Uh, uh, just, uh, I really feel like, you know, we want to get our core neighborhoods into that, that highest level and, and you're getting really close there, so I think it's really good.
Certainly, and, and within the guidelines of ARPA, which I don't profess to be nearly as knowledgeable as our finance department, is, we'll, we'll see. You know, again, it's, it's a new program, uh, as it evolves, although it's going to be a quick evolution because it won't last forever. Uh, if there's an opportunity to expand it within the ARPA guidelines, we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that, Counselor. So thanks for the comments.
Well, and then I would just add a, a comment to that. I really think that, you know, in a long-range vision for it, I think that is something we should consider thinking about, um, contemplating for a long-range opportunity, even when the ARPA funds were out, because I do think it is so tired, uh, so tied to the health of our core, which is instrumental to the health of our city.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nitzer? Let's keep it to the Safety and Home Repair Grant so we can keep on task. We've got a busy night ahead of us, so.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, my only commentary and, um, I, this is dangerous, I may be taken out of context and I may get beat up online about this and I'm, I'm going to take the heat on this one. I have a lot of people, I have huge mobile home parks in my district. I've been a champion for them, I've fought really hard for them. I've been to some that are truly appalling conditions, appalling, terrible. Um, wonderful, good people that live there, but in many cases, where they're living is not a blessing. Putting more money into it is, is not the answer. Getting them into better housing is, is the answer. Trailers are a depreciating asset. Um, I, I would, I would highly oppose, uh, adding that to this particular program. Again, wonderful people, but in many cases, the answer is to get them into more stable housing, not in something that's falling apart and is depreciating.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Counselor Ericson?
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin, for being here. I appreciate all the effort that you and your department has put into this. You guys have done a lot of legwork and, uh, really come up with a great program. So I appreciate your initiative to bring something like this forward. Um, uh, Director Pritchard, hold that book up for me, if you will. I've had, uh, uh, many conversations with Director Pritchard with his, um, ARPA book. Those are the regulations behind what we're looking at doing. Look at those sticky notes, look at those. I've never read them. Kudos to him for reading them and knowing what we need to do. So, uh, before we make demands of what we can and can't do, we really have to be careful to go through that book to know what it is. Um, I've been on this council for eight years. Counselor Kylie and I have worked with other council members that we've tried to make some changes, um, to, uh, housing. I would caution anyone to say, hey, knock, 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 I'm with the government, I'm here to help. It doesn't work. So in order to do something like that and get in those houses, we have to take a very cautious approach. Sometimes the rentals and the landlord will not let you in. No offense, my properties are really well taken care of. I don't want you in my properties and mine are fine, but that's just what we're dealing with as well. If the help is there and we can get inside, great, but we cannot be advocating to say, hey, I'm coming inside your, your house, even if it's to increase it. That's someone's private property, the place that they live, and it makes it really difficult. So I'm really excited for this Safety and Home Repair Grant. I think that this moves the needle. Um, I'm, I'm thankful for you guys taking the initiative on this and I can't wait to see some of the, um, the things that come out of what you're doing. So no question, just wanted to, uh, give my sentiments of appreciation for you and your department. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. I just want to say thanks for you and your department for actually getting stuff across the finish line. There's a lot of people that talk a lot. You guys actually act, so thank you for that and, uh, thank you for your presentation. Okay. Our next, uh, item on the agenda is public comment. Would anyone like to speak on anything that we've discussed here today? Okay, Counselor Ericson?
Um, I saw Counselor Starr came. If you want to give the Southeastern Council of Government the CCOG report since we skipped over that.
Counselor Starr, would you like to give that report today?
Yes, I'd be glad to. I hurried here as fast as I could. Um, I did have a personal situation and I'm really insulted, uh, Mr. Chairman, that you would personally attack me and I want to know if you're man enough to do it to my face.
I'm sorry, sir, I don't know what you're talking about.
You know exactly what you said at the end of the presentation because I heard it. And so did everybody else and it's recorded and we'll play it back for you. I hope you never have to go through what I did this afternoon.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
I had to watch one of my children be incarcerated.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
And you take personal cheap shots at me while I'm putting my child in being incarcerated.
We're going to move on.
I hope you never have to deal with that.
I would just like to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.
[applause]